All right, it is officially 7:30 PM Eastern Time. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. My name is Charles T. Brown. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Chairman Arcini could not be here tonight. This meeting is officially called to order. So in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicants, professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our Recording Secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you have completed your testimony. Thank you for that. Should anyone need masks, they are available in the back. We're now going to move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. The flag is in front and behind me.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's not here. Skip them.
Okay. Going to move to roll call and skip the oath of office right now. Me here is not present.
Councilman Embarsen.
Here.
Here.
Sammy Chavon.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Mustafa Mansray.
Yeah.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
All right, we're now going to move to regular minutes dated November 9, 2022. Christine, can you let us know who's all, who could vote on this?
Moved to approve.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
So November 9th, only Chairman Arcini cannot vote.
Thank you.
So Mr. Thomas moved to approve, and we had a second?
Seconded.
Sammy?
Okay.
Councilman Embarsen?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Chavon?
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
All right, moving on to December 7, 2022, regular minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Who's second? Okay, Councilman Embarsen?
Abstain.
You're abstain. Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Chavon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Before moving to roll call on December 21st, who's eligible for that?
I don't know. I don't have them with me.
Okay.
So what I'll do is just call the names, and I'll just take off who's not supposed to be there.
Sounds good. Is there a motion for December 21st? So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Has been moved and properly second.
Ted was, are you the one that moved it, Ted?
I moved it.
I'm sorry. And I heard Mr. Thomas second. Councilman Embarsen?
Abstain.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Chavon? Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's now move to Resolution 2023, Board Attorney.
I would move the motion to approve the resolution to appoint the Board Attorney for 2023.
Seconded. It's been moved and properly seconded.
Councilman Embarsen?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Chavon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you all. We're now moving to discussion, extension of time, The Harbor Group, PLN 21-00020. Please remember to speak into the mic, please. Please remember to speak into the microphone.
It's a new one, right?
It's a new one, that's why I had to remind you, yeah. You turn it on on the side.
Oh, power on.
Yes, sir. Once it turns red.
Can you hear me?
No, sir. It needs to be red like this. There you go. All right.
Got it. Okay. See, I don't have to hold it in my hand. Mr. Brown, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Jim Stahl, Boris Golden Foley, Vignolo, Hyman and Stahl, this is a request for an extension of time to perfect a minor subdivision. Some of you will recall, the resolution was granted in March of 2022, and the, I'm sorry, the application was approved in March, resolution was provided in June. We've been working with the staff to get a proper description and the subdivision deeds. And as today, everything takes time, we're looking for a 190-day extension within which to perfect the subdivision by getting the descriptions approved by staff, and then we will file them. That's what my application, if it will be.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I move to approve the extension of...
Seconded.
For 190 days. It's been moved and properly seconded.
Councilman, Sammy, second.
Sammy did. Yes.
Councilman Embarsen?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sam? Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to move into public comment. At this time, a reminder...
Mr. Brown?
Oh, you, that's right.
I want to save the, anyone who's here, to save them the time of... I'm the chairman. I'll repeat for the record, James Stahl, S-T-A-H-L, Boris Golden Foley, Vignolo, Hyman and Stahl. Rather than wait for other business, I didn't want to interfere with anyone's plans for this evening in the audience. I have, I represent B9 Schoolhouse, who's on for an extension of a hearing tonight, based upon its last meeting. However, I want to tell the Board that the applicant and our professional staff, including counsel, have reviewed the comments and the input that you, Board members, gave. It is our intention to eliminate, to the extent we can, all variances, so it is a fully compliant application. I'm not looking for a specific date today. We will provide revised applications and plans for review by the public and professional staff. At that time, we'll confirm with Chris and Mr. Healy a date. We will renotice, because the notice will absolutely be different, to the extent if we do eliminate variances, the content will change. So my request is just advise the Board that we wanted carried without a date, with new notice, and we will submit all plans as required, and then seek a new date. We're not, just for the record, because I don't want the public to be misled in any fashion, we are not withdrawing the application. The application as submitted remains in place. What we intend to do is to make such revisions and amendments to the application to eliminate all variances, to make it fully compliant. That's our intention, and we hope that we think we can succeed.
All right, I hope the public heard in regards to B9 Schoolhouse Owner LLC, that's PLN 22-0011. It will be renoticed at a time to be determined. It will not be heard tonight. Apologies for everyone that came out tonight in regards to B9. I want you to know how much I value and respect your time. This is unfortunate, but he has every right to do so. Hopefully, we did not cause you any inconveniences tonight.
Mr. Brown, can I say one thing?
If you have any comments, we'll entertain those during the general, well, there won't be any comments on this one, so no.
I just wish so.
There are no comments on this one. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for our attorney. Do we need to discuss with him momentarily, extension of deadline, or do we wait till March 31st? Well, thank you, Mr. Thomas. He always, to the extent that Chris needs an extension, we'll provide the extension. I don't have the dates, and I don't think Frank has them either.
Well, we are good until March 31st of this year, so we'll make sure that we get an extension.
Well, whatever you need, we'll give you.
Beyond that date, if it's scheduled beyond that date.
The second thing, so... Second thing, so that it's clear to the public, there'll be a, an additional renoticing for the next scheduled hearing. So public will be getting registered letters with a notification, just so that's clear. There'll be a new publication and a new service, certified mail on all, and we'll do an updated 200-foot list, because six months may pass by the time we're ready to notice, so yes. Okay. Thanks, that's all.
Yes, for the record, we really would appreciate in the future of the public, had an opportunity to learn of this much sooner. People traveled specifically for this, so that we don't establish any appearances of mistrust, distrust, and just complete disrespect for their time. Let's try to let them know moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, please listen up at this time. Listen up, please. It's time for public comments. We will only hear general planning comments at this time. If you have comments, we will be only hearing general planning comments at this time. Please approach the podium if you would like to.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to just give two, three minutes and let the room clear out?
Yes.
There's your sign-in sheet, Frank.
All right, everyone. If you're remaining, please take a seat. If you're remaining, please take a seat, unless you're going to approach the podium. Is there a motion from, from the Board to open it up for public comment? So moved. It's been moved by Sammy, seconded by Dr. Chase. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Anyone want to come up and speak on general planning Seeing none, I move as we close it. Public comments at this time? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now it's time for a hearing, Master Plan Update, Warehouse Development. Turn it over to Mark.
Good evening. So I'll give a, pretty much the same summary that I provided at the work session. This is a master plan amendment that is before the Board for consideration this evening. I'll just run through the documents as drafted. The first few paragraphs speak to the purpose of the master plan update. It speaks to the increased exponential growth in development applications for warehouses, consisting of two dozen applications since 2017, or 2018, totaling several million square feet. The second paragraph speaks about the anticipated impacts to the quality of life to the township, including truck traffic, noise, and air pollution. And then the third paragraph gets into essentially the meat of the matter, which is that the substance of the land use, or the update, is to update the land use, land use element of the master plan to recommend that warehouse development be removed as a permitted use in the business and industry zone. The next paragraph talks about, or outlines, the updated purpose of the business and industry zone. And then the last two, or the last two bullet points on the first page makes two related amendments or recommendations related to the Land Development Ordinance, the first one being that the Schedule I, which is the Schedule of Permitted Uses, would, to be consistent with this recommendation, would need to be updated to eliminate warehouse and distribution as a permitted use in the BI zone, and to amend Article 5, Conditional Uses, to eliminate the Conditional Use Standards for that use. And then the last bullet mentions a number of related portions of the Land Development Ordinance, including limited to parking requirements, the section that has definitions, sign requirements, et cetera. Basically, portions of the ordinance that reference warehouse and distribution would be similarly deleted. The last page makes a number of observations with respect to this recommendation, the first being that the township ordinance would remain consistent with the objective slash recommendation that the township maintains sufficient area of industrial districts to ensure adequate space for light industry and development of other permitted uses, and notes that roughly 4.8, four points, 4.8 square miles of the township, which is about 10% of the township, would remain in the BI zone. It mentions the fact that the BI zone would continue to permit a wide variety of uses, and notes the number of other permitted uses that remain permitted in that zone. Third paragraph talks about the, that there would remain substantial opportunities for warehouse use in that zone, in the form of several million, several million square feet of, on various properties of, in existing warehouse sites, in previously approved warehouse sites, or invalidly pending applications for warehouse development, and that was clarified last time, that that was, that consists of applications that have not yet come before the Board, but where there were applications that were, a complete application was made before an effective date of the ordinance. It notes that the, if the property is already in the BI zone, and is already developed with a warehouse, that that use could, would become illegal, pre-existing non-conforming use. Existing warehouse could remain in perpetuity. If somebody chose to wanting to expand that use, they would have the right to apply to the zoning board for D2 use variance, which is for expansion of a non-conforming use, and then applicants would continue to have the right to apply for use variance if they chose to, for D1 use variance before the ZBA. So that's basically the sum of the master plan amendment before you. As described, we, again, we discussed this at a work session, the last meeting. The purpose of tonight is to present this to the public and have the opportunity, and provide the public an opportunity to comment on this amendment before you decide on it.
Thank you, Mark. Any board questions or comments? Seeing none. Is there a motion open to the public?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, just open to, open to the public.
In regards to public comment, we're going to start first with the attorneys representing, how many attorneys we have here speaking? Three. Okay, each of, each person will receive 10 minutes each, max. You can go which, which...
Wherever you're comfortable.
Yes.
You sit if you want.
No, I gotta stand.
Okay.
Hey. Good evening. I first wanted to thank the Board for shuffling the agenda, because now this made my job a lot easier. Everyone's gone, except for these fine people. My name is Frank Vitolo. I am with the law firm of Sills, Cummins, and Gross. I represent Heller Industrial. It owns nine properties in Franklin Township, five of which, five of which are developed with warehouse distribution facilities, and four that are vacant. In July 2022, not even six months ago, we appeared before the Town Council to object to the adoption of an ordinance severely limiting the development of warehouse and distribution centers in Franklin Township. We explained to the Council how devastating this ordinance would be to my client's current operations and future plans. We also explained how there was a right way to introduce an ordinance that had such a significant impact, and that there was a wrong way to introduce the ordinance. I then explained to you how the town did it the wrong way. The town ignored the facts that I laid out during that hearing, and it ignored our pleas for reasonableness. You adopted the ordinance, the town did anyway, and Heller and nine other impacted property owners filed lawsuits seeking to reverse the Town Council's flawed decision. In response, the town introduced a new ordinance, a blanket ban on warehouses in the B1 zone, with no outs and no exceptions. My client Heller has operated in this township for over 40 years. They pay around $800,000 a year in taxes. They employ local residents. They funded the construction of a senior center and helped stabilize the local economy. So, rather than invite Heller in, and the other property owners, to discuss a fair and reasonable way of controlling warehouse development in the B1 zone, the town doubled down. As a thank you for decades of being tax-paying job creators, the town is treating Heller like an enemy. It's wrong, and you know it's wrong. The master plan amendment before you this evening is ill-conceived, rushed, and not supported by any credible evidence. I'm just going to give you 10 reasons, there are many more, why you should vote no. Number one, the town has failed to provide a meaningful opportunity for Heller to participate in this process. Number two, the town failed to study the alleged traffic impacts that would be caused by additional warehouse development. In fact, some of the uses still permitted in the zone, like manufacturing, bring the same amount of traffic and have a much greater impact on the environment. The town failed to update the circulation element, and no traffic study was commissioned as part of the reexamination. The current version of the circulation element doesn't even address alleged impacts of truck traffic. The town failed to engage with the county or NJ DOT regarding any alleged impact on the road system. The town failed to study the alleged environmental impact from warehouse development. There have no studies been done to show why the areas impacted here are particularly sensitive. The town failed to consider the financial impact of the amended plan and the new ordinance. For example, no study was done on how this will impact the township's affordable housing obligations, or how it will impact the township's tax revenue. The town failed to distinguish the alleged impacts between large distribution facilities and so-called last-mile facilities. They are very different, and they have very different impacts on traffic and the community. The town made no site-specific inquiries to determine the suitability of any facility for any certain location. The town failed to compile any studies or data on the alleged air and noise pollution. In support of the ban, the town improperly cherry-picked provisions of the State Planning Commission's guidance. In fact, the State Planning Guidance is a 48-page document, and it recommends that the towns work with the property owners to come up with narrowly tailored ways of controlling warehouse development. The guidance also focuses on the many different types of warehouse facilities there are, and how some are very appropriate in certain locations in a town. The town didn't follow any of that guidance. The town failed to allow Heller the opportunity to present planning testimony to here tonight, and has limited Heller and others to only 10 minutes, to try and avoid irreparable harm to its 40 years of doing business here. How in the world can you move forward with this process in good faith, when you have not even heard from the people and businesses that are most impacted by what you're going to do this evening? In 2020, 2021, you updated the master plan to allow more warehouse development, not less. What occurred in one year to justify banning something you were just expanding? This Board owes the property owners an answer to that question. In high school, we learned in history class, the reason why pure democracies can't exist, because if every person's opinion is given equal weight in the governmental process, the mob will always rule. It's your job, ladies and gentlemen, to make sure that the interests of those most impacted are heard and treated fairly. Do not let the mob rule. Allow Heller and the others a meaningful opportunity to participate in this process, so we can together come up with a way of controlling warehouse growth that satisfies the legal requirements and recognizes the decades of contributions that my clients and others represented here tonight have made to this community. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Please note also, we appreciate Heller's 40 years in the community. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Francis Pielinis. My offices are at Levin Clyde Road here in Somerset, New Jersey, and I'm pleased to represent Northern Nurseries on 487 Elizabeth Avenue in Somerset, New Jersey. Got it? We join in the comments made by Mr. Vitolo on behalf of Heller. We also... master plan update consisting of two or three pages and last page notably indicating what the law is about non-conforming uses, et cetera. Let me give you a little bit of background about Northern Nurseries for those of you who don't know where they are or who they are. Once again, they're at 487 Elizabeth Avenue. In 1998, when I was a much younger attorney, I obtained for Northern Nurseries a use variance. They were in the M1 zone at the time and I obtained a use variance for their nursery. And since that time, a period of about 24 years now, they've been operating the nursery here in Franklin Township. Back in 2016, this township did a master plan update and I'll term that a real master plan update because it was backed up by studies and, and, and certain strategic plans. And this is what it looked like, the Strategic Zoning and Economic Development Recommendations of the Business and Industry Zone, and was born at that time in September of 2020 after four years of study, a master plan that the town should have been proud of and was proud of, but apparently is no longer proud of because that document generated the ordinance that was adopted, which expanded and allowed warehouse use in the BI zone. It merged the M1, the M2 zone and the CB zone for various reasons, all detailed in the Strategic Zoning and Economic Development Recommendations, Business and Industry Zone, Master Plan Update. That is a master plan update. That is an amendment to the master plan and that is a, a master plan that was reexamined properly. It's our position, along with the others who are litigating the ordinances, that this particular update of a master plan has been rushed. There are no studies supporting that master plan amendment and it, it, it just doesn't work. It, it can't, can't succeed. So we're basically in litigation with the town, my client particularly, as a result of the proper rezoning of its property at the time into the BI zone and allowing warehouses entered into a contract to sell the nursery to a warehouse developer. We've been told that the warehouse developer was 30 days from filing a complete application with the, with the planning board when they, of course, were turned down to file the application because the ordinance changed and it was no longer a permitted use in, in the BI zone. And it, it appears that we'll be losing that contract. Northern Nurseries, it appears, will be losing that contract. And, and my question to the board is how fair is that? Has the board taken into account, as Mr. Vitolo has indicated, not only the interests of, of the residents and the local residents, have they looked at the site-specific information that's necessary to support or reject a warehouse use in the BI zone? What happened between 2020 and 2022 to cause this change and this purported master plan update that's before the board this evening? So I submitted a letter that I'm making part of the record. I sent it out today, addressed it to Chairman Orsini, who's not here for, right now, and the, and the board members, and I'm making reference to that and placing that, that matter on the record. And it indicates our objections, not only to this purported master plan update, but ultimately to the ordinance that's being heard by the Township Council next week. I believe it's on the 24th. I haven't heard anything about any consistency determination by the board. I assume the board will make a determination if, as, and when the master plan update is approved tonight at this public hearing. I note that following this public hearing, there'll be a discussion by the planning board. I'm not sure whether I'll have another opportunity to object to whatever's happening with respect to that discussion on the ordinance, but I want to say right now that we're opposing on behalf of Northern Nurseries, along with the other litigants involved, the master plan update that's before the board, as well as any consistency determination because the, we believe and I believe that the real master plan is contained in the September 2020 reexamination and public hearing on the master plan. So having said that, I'm not going to use the rest of my 10 minutes. I think Mr. Vitolo adequately pointed out some of the problems that exist in the, with respect to this proposed master plan. Thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Frank, your letter will be considered part of the record.
Yes.
All right, and there will not be a second public discussion. Mr. Vitolo, your letter will also be part of the record.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clarkin. Thank you, board.
Thank you, and please let your, your client know, we appreciate them as well.
My name is John Kaplan. I am from the law firm, the Harold Law Firm, sorry. I am from the Harold Law Firm in Warren Township, New Jersey. Much like Mr. Vitolo and Mr. Linis, our firm is also involved in the litigation with regard to the most recent ordinance amendment. We have three clients that are involved, MCS Franklin, PES Franklin, LL46, Onyx, 1718, North Washington LLC, Toronto Executive 1, 2, and 3. Of those three property owners, there's a total of five lots in the B1 zone. As Mr. Linis said, Mr. Vitolo covered everything. I'm not going to take up my 10 minutes, but we would like to place on the record our objection to this master plan amendment. As we said previously, this was rushed. There's no studies. There's been no consistency determination. We didn't hear anything about that. There's no rational basis why the entire B1 zone was blanketed with this ban. So for the record this evening, I would just like to place my objection that we were not involved. We were told we were not allowed to bring any planners. We're not allowed to put on any testimony or cross-examination. So on behalf of my clients, I would just like to put our objection on the record.
Mr. Kaplan, did you have a letter? Because I haven't seen it.
I do not have a letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Joe Hoffman, five Congress Court. I guess I'm a member of the mob. I have two very simple questions. One, your definition of warehouse and distribution and the source of that definition?
Sir, this is not a Q and A type of format.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll hear all of your input.
At a future date?
No, now. Whatever input you want to give us.
Can you hear me, first of all?
Yes.
My name is Sally Zaharchek. I live at 4 Constitution Way, Somerset, New Jersey. I have great respect for what the corporate attorney for Premier had to say. I have great respect for corporate attorneys. I raised one. I do not necessarily agree with him, but I then, most of the time, don't agree with my daughter either. So let me explain just a little bit about why I don't agree with his assessment and statement, and then maybe we can artfully and respectfully agree to disagree. Premier Homes has been here in the community for many years. So have I. 20 years ago, my husband and I moved here and bought a home from Premier. We have been immensely dissatisfied with the home. We had to replace windows that leaked after 10 years. We've had to watch our neighbors replace floors. We have had numerous problems.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is not, not the place.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm.
I just want to.
It's relevant to the warehouse issue.
Stay, please stay on topic.
I will.
According to the warehouse.
I will.
Thank you, man.
I do not necessarily agree that they've been a valued member of the community. To that end, when I look at the town and what this town is trying to accomplish, I look at a town that we chose. I am not against business. I served for 10 years on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce in New York. I am very pro-business. I do not believe that a town does not have the right to set a vision for itself and think, in fact, I think it's prudent, and to set a master plan and reset it to a degree and first and foremost, for the health, safety, and well-being of its citizens, encouraging business, encouraging quality business, and encouraging a quality layout that works for all. To that end, I sincerely hope that this town does take all of those things into play and proceeds to pass a moratorium because there are other places in this state where more warehouses can be built and I think we've done our fair share to accommodate that business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marlon Kwan, 28 J's Corner. I just want to applaud the planning board and the township. I think this is too long, too late, and, you know, for the interest of money, I can understand the attorneys being here. They cost a bundle, I'm sure. But at the end of the day, it's all about the town residents. They forget that because they don't live here. They can forget that because they're making money.
Please stay on topic, sir.
I am. We're talking about warehouses.
Let's make sure we don't disrespect the, the warehouse representatives, though. Everyone's been respectful.
I understand that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The bottom line is, is that we need to focus on the residents. There is no doubt that warehouses serve a purpose. There is no doubt that industry serves a purpose, but the residents should be first. And when the BI zone was created, I think there was a little bit of a lack of foresight in terms of how extensive that BI zone was going to rear its head along residential property. And so I applaud the planning board, I applaud the township to revise the master plan, to put some forethought into the future of this township so that we can all live practically, economically, and safely. Thank you.
Thank you. I have all night. Going to let you think about it for a second. Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in follow?
None. The public portion of this hearing is closed. What we have before is the master plan update on the warehouse development. You have some? Go ahead.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, the chair should entertain a motion whether or not to adopt Mr. Haley's master plan update.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Sammy. Seconded. Still a roll call on that.
Councilman Embarsen?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the motion having been passed, it is the board's discretion if it would like to consider a written resolution memorialize the action that it just took.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Embarsen?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Discussion. All right, we're now going to move into discussion. We have ordinance number 4391-22. Mark, would you like to give a brief introduction?
Sure. This is an ordinance that was introduced by the Franklin Township Council on December 13th, 2022. Under the municipal land use law, they are required to send it to the planning board for its review, including consistency with the master plan and any recommendations the board may have. So that is, that has been sent to you. Again, that ordinance is to prohibit warehouse development in the BI zone.
Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, it might help if I give a little explanation.
Yes.
The ordinance gets adopted on first reading by the governing body, by the council. It's then, by the terms of the municipal land use law, it's required to be sent over to the planning board for its review and recommendation before it can have a second and final reading. And that is what is happening right now. The master plan gives visions, all right, and recommendations. The ordinance, if it's adopted, implements those recommendations from the master plan.
Is this something we need to, to vote on?
The answer is, you do have a written resolution in front of you, which concurs with the ordinance and makes a specific finding that the proposed amendments are consistent with goals and objectives of the 2006 master plan to 2016 master plan reexamination and the 2023 master plan update that was just voted upon. So there is a resolution for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to, to have this resolution voted on.
Seconded. It's been moved in properly.
Councilman Embarsen?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. We had, hearing is at Polio International, but it was carried to February 1st, 2023. There are no committee reports, no work session of new business. Is there? Does anyone have any new business? Was not notified of any? Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Thank you.